One to the January twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four special meeting of the Budget and Oversight Committee of the San Francisco Elections Commission. I'm the President Stone. I'm the President Rovinestone. The time is now six oh five P. M., and I call the meeting to order. Before we proceed further, I would like to ask Commission Secretary Marissa Davis to briefly explain some procedures for participating in today's meeting.
Thank you, President Stone. The minutes of this meeting will reflect that this meeting is being held in person at City Hall, Room four one six, one Dr. Carlton B. Goodlett Place, San Francisco, nine four one oh two, and via Web X. As authorized by the Elections Commission's February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three vote, members of the public may attend the meeting to observe and provide public comment either at the physical meeting location or remotely. Details and instructions for participating remotely are listed on the Commission's website and on today's meeting agenda. Public comment will be available on each item on this agenda. Each member of the public will be allowed three minutes to speak, six minutes if you are on the line with an interpreter. When providing public comment, you are encouraged to state your name clearly. Once your three minutes have expired, staff will thank you, and you will be muted. Please address your comments to the entire commission and not to a specific individual. While providing public comment remotely, please ensure you are in a quiet location. When joining by phone, you will hear a beep when you are connected to the meeting. You will automatically be muted and in listening mode only. To make public comment, dial star three to raise your hand when your item of interest comes up. You will be added to the public comment line, and you will hear you have raised your hand to ask a question. Please wait until the host calls on you. The line will be silent as you wait your turn to speak. If at any time you change your mind and wish to withdraw yourself from the public comment line, press star three again, and you will hear the system say you have lowered your hand. When joining by Web X or a web browser, make sure the participants' side panel is showing by clicking on the participants' icon. At the bottom of the list of attendees is a small button or icon that looks like a hand. Press the hand icon to raise your hand. You will be unmuted when it is time for your comment. When you are done with your comment, click the hand icon again to lower your hand. In addition to participating in real time, interested persons are encouraged to participate in this meeting by submitting public comment in writing by twelve P. M. on the day of the meeting to elections dot commission at S F gov dot org. It will be shared with the commission after this meeting has concluded and will be included as part of the official meeting file. Thank you, President Stone.
Thank you. Thank you. Secretary Davis, would you please proceed with item one, BOPAC roll call?
President Stone.
Present.
Commissioner Giordano.
Here.
Vice President Parker.
Here.
Those are the three commissions, commissioners who are due at this meeting.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. I will now move to agenda, or to the land acknowledgement, which Commissioner Giordano has agreed to state.
Thank you, President Stone. The San Francisco Elections Commission acknowledges that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Remitishaloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Remitishaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to repay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors and relatives of the Remitish community and affirming their sovereignty, sovereign rights as first peoples.
Thank you, Vice President, or excuse me, Commissioner Giordano, for reading the land acknowledgement. We are now going to move to, that closes agenda item number one. We're going to move to item number two, general public comment. Public comment on any issue within BOPAC's general jurisdiction that is not covered by another item on this agenda.
There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Secretary Davis. That closes agenda item number two, and we're actually going to forego agenda item number three and move the meeting minutes to the next BOPAC meeting. And go straight to agenda item number four, Department of Elections' proposed budget review. Discussion and possible action on the Department of Elections' annual budget as prepared by the Director of Elections, John Arns. The Elections Commission is required to conduct two reviews of the department's budget no less than fifteen days apart. This is the first budget review. The full commission will conduct its second budget review during its regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, February fourteenth. With that, I will open it up to my committee members to ask their questions of the director. Or actually, excuse me, let me hand it over to Director Arns first to introduce the budget, and then we will ask questions.
Thank you, President Stone. So the department has provided the commission with the actual forms that we'll provide to the mayor's office when submitting the budget at the end of February, and also a memorandum which provides explanations for the items in the forms and explanation of the basis for the information in our budget submission. So in San Francisco, the department developed two-year budgets for two fiscal years, not just for the upcoming fiscal year. So the next, next, the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year is B Y on the forms, and then the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year is B Y one. And for, for the next fiscal year, B Y, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, the department's putting forward a budget proposal of around twenty-five million dollars. Then for B Y one, the department's putting a budget proposal of around twenty-three million, four hundred thousand dollars. The mayor's office has requested all departments cut or reduce the reliance on the general fund by a certain amount, and that amount for the Department of Elections was six hundred and eighty thousand dollars for both fiscal years. The department did find, did find methods to reduce its reliance on the general fund for B Y for the next fiscal year of around five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and then for B Y plus one, I think is around five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You'll see on budget form one B, which is the page three of the forms that we sent, you'll see at the bottom of the, the bottom row there, there's some text in red that says target not met, and that indicates that the reductions that the department is putting forward haven't, don't meet the, the total that the mayor's office put forward for, for the department. Then also, the department, the mayor's office asked the departments to have, to develop contingency reductions of a certain amount. For Department of Elections, it was three hundred and, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, I believe, and we've not put together any contingency reductions at this time. And the reason is, we're going into the presidential cycle, which is the, the biggest election in the four-year cycles of elections, and we're also expecting, since removing the five local contests, mayor, sheriff, city attorney, district attorney, treasurer, said all of them, to the, from the odd year, twenty twenty-three to twenty, November twenty twenty-four, we're actually increasing the, the length of the ballot, and also any, any, any local measures that would have appeared in that November twenty twenty-three election likely could be moved to the November twenty twenty-four election. So we likely have a lot of measures which will affect both the ballot and the voter information pamphlet. So in, in our budgets, too, it's very consistent in what drives our numbers. It's the, the numbers and types of elections and the, and the, and the size of the ballots and the length of the voter information pamphlets, and the staffing and the, and all the support services, and the materials and supplies that would be associated with conducting election are driven by the, the ballot and the voter guide and, and, and the turnout as well. And so that's like a quick summary of the, of the budget to start the conversation for tonight. In the budget memorandum that we provided, we did put some information regarding Assembly Bill fourteen sixteen, and, and it, the information around A B fourteen sixteen moves around a bit from mentioning five cards, six card, and seven or more cards, and that's just trying to get a sense of, of the costs with, with ballots. Department expects to have a six-card ballot going into, for the November twenty twenty-four election, and, and we're also trying to get a sense of what would happen if we went to a bigger than, more cards than six in November. And, and to the last fiscal year, I introduced an ordinance trailing legislation with our budget to opt out of fourteen sixteen on an ongoing basis. The board accepted that opt-out for this current March election, and then it was to be an election-to-election decision whether to opt out or not. The department's not intending to opt out of fourteen sixteen for, for November at this time, although I think we'll have a conversation about potentially having, you know, a triggering mechanism to opt out if we go beyond six-card or seven-card ballot. Now, we can talk about that more during the meeting. And so that's, that's the summary, and I, at this point, I'd be glad to take any questions. We can talk more in depth from there, so.
Thank you, Director Arns. Sorry, I initially almost cut you off there with your comments. And actually, the one thing I was just going to mention before I pass it over is, didn't the Board of Supervisors with A B fourteen sixteen, wasn't it year by year, not election by election for opt-out? I think it was like to review every budget cycle, how they had the opt-out as it stands.
Maybe. I thought it was election by election, but.
Doesn't, yeah. Either way, not ideal to have it be every, every so often. Okay, I will pass it over. Thank you for the comments. I will pass it to the commissioners, committee members, if you want to just, I mean, we can continue using the structure that we currently use for commission meetings, and I will call on you. Commissioner Giordano.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President Stone, and thank you, Director Arns, for all the work you put into the budget. I know it's a really challenging time with all the, the cuts that need to be met, so I appreciate all the work you're doing to try to meet that. I also want to just appreciate your call out on page three about having outreach on ranked voting being a focus for the November election because it's going to be on several, for several contests there. I have a few questions. I, I do have a couple questions around the number of cards in the A B fourteen sixteen, but I'll hold those to the end. But, um, my first questions are around section E, so I wanted to thank you for, you know, including an extra detail that the commission had requested around the, the vendors, the contracts that the department has. So one of my questions is, at last, last year's BOPAC meeting, I'd asked about a little more detail on the costs around the translation services and some of the things around ballot preparation, and you had mentioned some other vendors like Interethnica and Topin Merrill. And are those, are those also vendors that the department has contracts with?
No, we purchase their services through purchase order.
I see. Okay. And then, so that would cover like, and also like the mailing and labeling and everything?
Right.
You, you'd say there's also prep work for mailing and labeling?
Right.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how does that work? Like, how does, how do you decide to do like a purchase order versus a, a sole source versus like a bidding process?
With the ballots and the, and the voter guide and the translations, which would be a part of both, the Elections Co., say Elections Co. allows departments to, to forego the contracting of, to get those services. So in the, this is, this is how it's been since before I was, was even part of the department. So the, the department has, has, has used purchase orders to obtain the services for, for ballots, for translation, and for the voter guide. And what, what, what that does, though, too, is that there's, 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 there's no holdup in the process as far as getting those, those services. And then also, it provides flexibility if there's a change, if there needs to be a change in vendors, because we have changed vendors in the past based on, on services. So that's why we, we've continued to follow the, the route of using purchase orders.
And then do you do a purchase order before each election, or is it more of a multi-year agreement?
No, it's before each election.
Okay. Great. That's, that's interesting. And then, and then also, who does the type setting? Is that also part of Interethnica?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And then, so, yeah, I'll move to the questions about the number of ballot cards and things. And just for starters, independent of A B fourteen sixteen, on page seven, you say that the, the six cards would result in torn envelopes, and I know, I know in the past you've said that six is already pushing the envelope, you know, no pun intended, but, are you, so are you saying that already there's going to, like, assuming we have six cards, there will already be issues, or are you having ways of reducing that? You know, the tearing and?
So six cards is really the, the limit to our current processes, and we can, we can expand the width, the opening of the envelope a bit, still retain the letter size specs, so that would help with, with the tearing. But just also, we know, it's not, it's not really beholden to having six cards, even if we had a five-card ballot, it would be the same, just that voters, when they, when they insert the cards into the envelopes, they don't always do so in a nice folded manner, but they, we, we call them footballs. They kind of put all the cards together, and then they shove them in the envelope. So more cards means bigger footballs, essentially, and it, but again, it's not specific to a six-card ballot. It's also the same as a, as a five, even a four-card ballot. So, so, yeah, there, there will be instances where we have potentially voters tearing their envelopes, and they're trying to insert the cards, and that's not necessarily because of six cards, it's just how the, the voters prepare the ballots for, for reinsertion into the, or insertion to the return envelopes.
Okay, thank you. And then related to that, this is a question I've had for a while, and I may have asked you this in a previous year, but is the, the thickness of the cardstock that the city uses, is that, is it like the same thickness that other counties use, or is it a statewide mandate, or, you know, do any counties use like a thinner paper?
So each voting system has a, a paper weight that, for which that system is approved to use. So if you remember with the previous voting system from Sequoia, the, the cardstock was, it was a hundred and ten pound weight. With the Dominion system, I think it's ninety, or eighty, eighty or ninety weight, and that's really about as thin as you want to go with, with the ballot, just based on the bleed-through characteristics of, of paper. So, but even though ninety, a hundred and ten don't seem like there's a, much of a difference in the, in the thickness, there's actually a large difference between ninety, a hundred and ten. So having a thinner card allows for a, a better ballot product going through the post office's equipment and also coming, coming back and going through our equipment. It also allows for the voters to more easily handle the cards, to insert them into return envelopes.
Okay, thank you. And then my last questions are around A B fourteen sixteen. I, I also want to thank you for putting in the subsection in there about possible solutions in the case that you can't include the ballot labels. And I, I wanted to maybe discuss, and I know President Stone has said to the commission that she's discussed some of these, she's had conversations with you about, you know, different variations, but I wanted to just run a couple suggestions by you. In the case that you can't print the ballot labels in the ballot, like, would, would another possibility to be to, like, insert like an eight and a half by eleven, like, sheet of paper into the envelope that includes the information that would have been on the ballot, so it wouldn't be a cardstock, and it wouldn't have to be sent back to the department? Would that be a possibility?
Maybe, but there's also the issue of adding something else to insert in the envelope, and, and it seems like even a piece of paper would not be a, a lot, but if, if we're getting the point where we're, we're trying to, if, if, if we've maxed out on the limit of, of our processes, and we don't want to, and I'm not trying to say this is a bad, I'm just, I'm just thinking aloud here, but we, we, we may not want to add another insert into the envelope.
Okay.
If, 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 if thickness is an issue.
And then another possibility, which would be kind of, you know, less than that, would be, I know you, you're saying you could have the language on the ballot that would point people to the voter information guide, and one of the problems there is that because the guide is so long, that information would be spread across, you know, potentially, you know, one or two hundred pages and mixed in with a lot of things, and it could be hard for voters to locate those, you know, what is it, two hundred and fifty characters? And I'm wondering if you would, you could have like, like a single page in the V I P, maybe at the beginning of the section on the ballot measures, that would have that information just in one place, so voters wouldn't have to leaf through, you know? Is that something that you've thought about, or, or could, could, would be a possibility?
Well, the first page in the voter guide is a table of contests that lists the page numbers for you to measure in the voter information pamphlet.
I, I mean, the, what I mean is, instead of having the, the list of supporters and opponents, the condensed list of supporters and opponents for each measure, like, in the section on the, each individual measure, you could just have maybe, at the beginning of the section on all the measures, you could have a page that's like, this is the information on supporters and opponents that would have been listed on the ballot, you know, so it's, it's all in a one, one-stop location.
I mean, that's certainly something we could think about, sure.
Okay. All right. So that, that covers my questions. Thank you, President Stone.
Thank you, Commissioner Giordano, and actually, I, I had a few things that maybe overlapped, because I had literally just spoken with the director about that exact question, and I wanted to walk through some things with A B fourteen sixteen, but I'll hand it to Commissioner Parker first, and then I'll kind of walk through some of what, some of what I wanted to share around A B fourteen sixteen, and then we can also bring that to the commission for the February fourteenth meeting as well. But first, I'll hand it to Commissioner Parker to see if she had any questions or comments before.
Yes, thank you, President Stone. I just had a couple, and forgive me, I know we've talked about some of these in commission meetings, I just, I didn't have a chance to go back through my old notes, so you may have said these things, because they, they are familiar to me before. But one was, this is a contextual question. I, and before I say that, I, I actually really appreciate the memo. I thought it was very easy to follow and, and read, like, it was, it was a lot of great context here. But with the, when, when we moved the citywide officer elections to the presidential's, as opposed to those odd years where they have been in the past, my recollection is that part of that intent was to save total costs by moving them off of the odd years, and there is so much in this document about, you know, the added cost with longer ballots and things like that. Did it, I'm sure there was controller analysis when we had that on the ballot, I just don't remember what it was. Is there a difference, a savings in cost, having moved to not having that citywide election separate?
Overall, yeah, because there's, we're not, we're not recruiting poll workers, we're not obtaining polling places. It's one less election where we have to bring in the temporarily needed personnel to provide support for the election. So, so yes, overall, there would be a cost, there would be a cost savings for the city by having the odd-year elections consolidated with even-year elections.
Okay. Just, I know there's nothing to do about it. I was just trying to make sure I recalled what, correctly what was the situation. And also, I recall a conversation in one of our meetings about when we get to the, the higher number of cards on a particular election, that there were issues also with the machines. And so can you remind me, like, at what card limit was that where we're going to have real issues with the machines?
So if we go over six cards, that's, that's really where everything changes in some degree around the ballot production, ballot assembly, ballot packaging, ballot shipping, ballot processing, both of the USPS equipment, our equipment, then also the time for us to, to handle those cards and to, and to scan them in the, in the topulators. Six cards, we can accommodate in the current process, and that's really the, the max with the current process. There, it is a thicker packet going through machines, so it will be likely a bit slower with a bit more jams, but, and also, the weight of a six-card ballot likely will be a, not a letter, a, 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 a letter-sized weight, but a, a flat weight. But we think, even, even though the, the, the weight will cause charges for postage related to mailing flats, the size of the packet would be for letter size. So we, there wouldn't be a change as far as the, the packaging of those envelopes when they're printed and assembled at, at the, at the ballot printer, then they can also still move through the post office equipment and our equipment as well.
Right. I recall reading all of those in there, so, but we wouldn't, if we went over six cards, our machines wouldn't be able to process them.
No, I probably, we'd probably have to do manual processing.
Okay. That's what I was curious about, if we actually got that long in an upcoming election. Okay. And then I was also trying, on this A B fourteen sixteen question, trying to recall from our last conversation about this, whether there was any indication that the Board of Supervisors would want to opt out, opt out of that for November, or they just, you, I appreciate also all the solutions that you have here and, and all of the detail going into this, but do you have any, any sense what will happen, actually? No? Okay. There's no indication that you have? Okay.
I mean, at, at this point, we're opted in, and that's what the board's decision last year, so.
Okay. All right, great. Let's see. I noticed a couple of possible typos or mislabelings. Shall I just send those to you separately by email?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Great. Let me see. Oh, and then this is just a clarifying, and I actually, I did not write down which page this was on, but it was just, it was an acronym that I was not familiar with, but I was just trying to find it, because I don't remember.
EIMS?
P E X and T E X.
So P E X means permanent exempt.
Okay.
Personnel employee, and then T E X means temporary exempt.
Great.
And so temporary exempt are the as-needed personnel. Then the permanent exempt are usually, that means that they're project-based, so they're, they have a three-year funding schedule within the, the city's budgeting process.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right. That's, that was what I was wondering, and those were the main questions I had that were not already brought up.
Thank you, Vice President Parker. I will talk through some of the A B fourteen sixteen, so you both may have some additional questions or comments about that, since we're, we've talked a fair amount about the number of cards and the Board of Supervisors. But first, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, which is to say thank you, Director Arns, for putting this together and providing such a detailed memo for the commission to understand, and the public to understand. I know there are significant budget concerns from, for our city, but with the enormous transition to even years, even knowing how many, even without A B fourteen sixteen, going to more ballot cards is an enormous expense, and that is not something we can just say opt in or opt out. We have to comply with the change to even years, so I know it's a big expense, and appreciate all the efforts to, to explain to the public and the commission why the budget is written the way it is. I also wanted to say thank you for, I think Commissioner Giordano also spoke to this, but about the outreach and voter registration components as well, which is the, a priority of the commission, and ensuring that that is reflected in the budget is important, so appreciate that a lot. And then, as it pertains to A B fourteen sixteen, so this has been, and this is actually kind of newer information for folks, I don't know if we have anyone listening in, but at least for the committee, and anyone who chooses to listen to this ahead of the commission meeting on the fourteenth. Director Arns and I have been going back and forth for quite a while about A B fourteen sixteen, knowing that this was something, I don't know if it's heat or air, it's very, very loud, let's hope it's not heat. Let's hope it's not heat. But, um, hopefully everyone, I'll just speak a little louder. But this has been a, of concern for some advocates, um, as well as the commission. I believe we pretty much, I don't know unanimous, but I would say general consent. The commission had a fair amount of support to opt into AB 1416. However, there are pretty dramatic implications for running, for administering our elections, uh, knowing that we are moved to even years for all of the local offices that the, uh, director spoke to. And so, uh, actually, the, uh, director was particularly kind to call out the six card ballot, even though five card ballots is kind of already exceeding five, would be pushing the limit quite a bit. But, uh, agreeing to the opt in unless specified, with the exception of, um, uh, exceeding a six card ballot is actually something that I very much appreciate from the director. Because the way that I described moving to seven card ballot would actually be kind of catastrophic for the department's operations. And so, um, really where we landed in terms of the agreement around this is looking backwards at when the department might know that they would potentially be coming close to even a seven card ballot. Because if they are, or if they're on a six card ballot and knowing how much the opponents and proponents could potentially add to the length of the, or add, yeah, add to the length of the ballot, um, that would immediately move to a seven card ballot. And so we actually, in, uh, at the end of last year, worked through kind of the timeline of when things would come from the state and local, in terms of marking backward before the, uh, November election. And where we landed is that, um, between E 88 and E 70, the director could notify the commission about the number of cards. And the reason for this, actually, let me take a step back. So the director in his, um, in the budget, in the budget memo on page eight, I want to speak to what I'm actually talking about. On page eight, says in the last paragraph of possible solutions, it says, "Another solution to de- to decreasing the length of the number, November 5 ballot without jeopardizing language act access would be for the board of supervisors to opt out of 1416 for this election, remain opted in contingent on that decision not adding an additional ballot card." The contingent opt in could also include a provision that the department would add a short instruction regarding where the, the measure of list opponents and proponents in the voter information pamphlet. So I just, I, what I'm actually getting at is, um, that the, uh, that the, this, this solution, I'd like to kind of expand on a little bit. So the idea being that so long as we don't reach a seven card ballot, we're opted in. But let's say we are reaching a seven card ballot, uh, it would not, we would actually have needed to have made the decision for how to budget for that through some sort of legislation to opt out of AB 1416 well in advance. Is that June, July, June, July?
Well, the budget hearings are in mid-June, yeah, right.
Right. Sorry, June. So basically, the board of supervisors would have to pass something in June in order for us to make that decision. So in order for us to continue to opt in without the risk of, of having to, without the risk of the impacts on legislation, the director and I had talked about what would happen with concern of moving to a seven card ballot, notwithstanding all of the other considerations. And the idea was opting in with this contingency. So the contingency, we would know sometime around E 88 or E 70 is when, uh, what exactly are you, do you receive from the state? It's the, what is it at that date? Let me go back.
Well, the translations of such measures usually are what?
Would push you over, yeah. So that, that's early August. The director said that by August 21st, he could notify the commission that we're inching toward a seven card ballot and therefore would need to opt out. And the reason, so basically it leaves time between when he would know the, uh, the additional length from the translation of the measures before they would actually have to like print the ballots or, or kind of lay out the ballots and print them, which I have, I think you said happened September 21st, sometime after the commission's next regular meeting in September. So the idea being that the director could potentially let the commission know in August, we are inching toward this measure of seven cards or exceeding six cards, and therefore we want to opt out so that we don't reach this catastrophic point. The commission could then decide to hold a special meeting to give the public an opportunity to weigh in, to ask questions if they choose or just accept that. And, um, and then the, uh, and then the director would move forward with the six card ballot. So let me just recap that because I didn't do, uh, the best job kind of walking through that from a timeline perspective. So rather than us as a city opting out of AB 1416, we'd continue to automatically opt in with the caveat of a contingency planning should we be reaching the, uh, reaching a seven card ballot. If we are reaching a seven card ballot, the director would have the authority to potentially trigger an opt out at around, between E 88 and E 70, so around August 21st, but would first notify the commission that he would have to trigger the opt out, thereby giving the public and the commission the opportunity to weigh in, ask questions and make sure that the director did everything possible to, um, to accommodate AB 1416. So we would know with time to weigh in before the actual layout and printing would take place. I hope that recap helped. I feel like I, I didn't, um, explain it as well at the beginning. And then the other thing I wanted to call out that, uh, the director and I had spoken about was the font size for the proponents and opponents, because the state, the AB 1416 does allow for that, for the proponents and opponents to be at a smaller font size than the rest of the, um, text on the ballots. And it's, from my understanding, uh, another jurisdiction had, did do some sort of mockup of that. And it, I've heard that it was kind of mixed, um, though I haven't yet seen it with my own eyes. Um, and so that is something that, um, the director and I have spoken about that could be explored as a possible alternative, but certainly not ideal and also may not add that much. A, may have some accessibility considerations of itself and B, may not actually save that much space ultimately. The idea being, let's do our absolute best to stay opted in, but we're not going to, you know, create a catastrophe for the department by inching them toward a seven card ballot. So I think that was it. I think that was it, but I really want to say I appreciate the department, the director and the department's efforts to accommodate AB 1416, not knowing that six card ballots, a six card ballot is already pretty enormous. And so, uh, I think it's a, a show of good faith in attempt to accommodate it, notwithstanding, and hopefully we can do it, but worst case, um, perhaps the next, um, the next round. Yep. Uh, Vice President Parker.
This is, uh, is actually, this is just reminding me, you know, the, the early part of the possible solutions, um, section here talked about, um, transitioning from, the possibility of transitioning from bilingual to monolingual, um, ballot format. And I can totally appreciate the challenges that, uh, folks who might want to cross-reference, as you mentioned, um, in the memo. And I'm wondering, is that something worth doing, some kind of a mockup or test or something with, um, you know, with a focus group just to see whether that feels like an option to put out there?
We could, but thinking a bit more about this too. If we were to move to a monolingual from bilingual ballot, we'd have to do outreach and that would be more cost, you know? So then, uh, so I, I'm wondering how much savings would there be really to, to make that? And then even if you do the outreach, you're not going to contact everyone, uh, potentially who's going to, you know, pay attention. But yeah, we can put it out there. LA uses monolingual ballots. And they've, because they've got like, I think, 19 languages. And so they, they issue monolingual ballots. I don't know how they, they handle that. If they put the, like a, uh, English reference in the envelope or not, or at the polling places. We can, we can look into it more though.
Do you know if, um, when, how long they've been doing the monolingual ballots?
No, I would, no, I don't know. I would think it's since they had their new voting system. Because they had, since they had a punch card system before that.
Okay. Because why I'm asking and wondering is because if there was a, um, if there were data to look at, you know, um, in participation rates on the pre-monolingual and post-monolingual to see if that impacted it at all. But if they were completely different voting systems, that might be too many variables to, to have useful data. So that's why I was wondering.
We can check.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, fine.
Uh, I was just going to just mention one thing, um, Commissioner Giordano, if you don't mind. Actually, I have two things I wanted to mention. One is I could try and dig up where that mockup, it may have been in Contra Costa or something, uh, of the, like, I think it's eight point font for the proponents and opponents, which is pretty small. Um, and my understanding is it, it wasn't that great. So if it's helpful, um, in the conversation with the commission in February, I can also try and dig that up. And the other comment I was, I just needed, I meant to bring up, Commissioner Giordano's comments about the kind of table of contents idea because I did broach that with the, um, director as well. The only thing I would mention is just the length of the voter information pamphlet, which is already like a conversation that I think that we should acknowledge, uh, before we leave today, just how long that is. But I don't, I actually think it's a good idea to discuss, um, potentially having it as a cheat sheet of some kind with, uh, proponents, listing the proponents and opponents. But I do know that there are other areas in the voter information pamphlet where that exists. So, um, yeah. Commissioner Giordano.
Okay. Thank you, um, President Stone. And, um, Vice President Parker, for the, the additional thoughts on AB 1416. I, I want, before I talk about the AB 1416 a little bit more, I wanted to just respond a little bit. Vice President Parker, your comment about the, the consolidation of elections because I think the subtext of what you're saying is that, you know, the department's being asked to cut 10% of their budget and really that consolidation should be counting towards that. But correct me if I'm wrong, Director Arns, they're, they're wanting 10% on top of assuming the consolidation. Is that correct? They're not taking into account the savings in the consolidation?
Correct. And the mayor's office, I would say, is looking at current expenses. They're now looking at past expenses that are factored into today's reductions or decreased operating costs. So they're not viewing it that way.
Yeah. So even if you save all this money in the past, you're just asked to do more in the following years. So on the AB 1416, um, just a couple different comments. Like number one, I think it might be a good research project that someone could do in the spring would be to maybe look at some of the Bay Area counties and see, you know, which counties have opted in and how many, and what those ballots look like. And then, um, just to kind of get a comparison of layouts and things. I think the monolingual ballot, I think, um, you know, just in hearing Vice President Parker talk about it, I think it would be good to like do our due diligence and just at least have the discussion, you know, even if it's something that the city doesn't wind up doing. But Director Arns, do you have a sense of, um, like what percent savings a monolingual ballot would have? Would it be like, you know, 75% of length? Or have you done any analysis on that ballpark?
No, but you're essentially, with the Chinese English ballot, you're cutting the content in half. Spanish, English, a little bit more than half, then Filipino, English, um, probably 60%.
Yeah. So if you're going down from a six card to a four card or three card, that could, you know, potentially give you a lot of options for other stuff too. You know, increased education things. But, um, let's see. So, um, President Stone, just to clarify one thing, I, I like your proposed process, the outline. I think that's a really good idea to kind of avoid the catastrophe. And just to clarify, that process that you described would have to be approved by the board of supervisors? So would that be like an ordinance that would go before the board?
Yes, I know that the, that Director Arns has already talked to the, or is, the DCAs are in the process of exploring what would be required to do something like that, yeah.
Great. Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. And it would give the, um, be a little bit more of a nimble process. You wouldn't have to go to the board as the election approaches. And then my last, um, question is around ballot layout. Director Arns, I know, I think in the past, you, you tend to organize the ballots head in like sections, right? You'll have like the state candidates and then, um, you know, local candidates and then local measures and state measures. Do you try to keep the different categories on different ballots? Or I'm wondering if there's any, if you might have white space at like the bottom of the candidate section, could you use some of that, you know, put, start putting the measures there? Or do you have, do you like to divide things up? You know what I mean? So that you know, if you have a lot of white space on a ballot card, you could use that real estate to help, um, you know, reduce the number of cards?
Yeah, it's really hard to answer that question because you have to, it just depends on the content that needs to go onto the cards. But I can't say the best practice is not to break up contests and measures as, as little as possible. So, you know, you don't want to have three pages of local measures if you could have got it on two pages.
Even if you're mixing candidates and measures on, on a card, you mean, or?
Yeah, I mean, we have done in the past, but that's, that's not a best practice. And you, and you can't, you can't split a contest on a different pages of, you know? So, so, yeah, whites, there might be white, and that's why you'll see white space on the ballots. But then it's also what is the best approach to ensure that voters see the content that's on the ballot? You don't want them turning pages and there's measures on three different pages. I mean, you could have had on two. So it just depends. I mean, it's hard, it's hard to give a hard, hard answer, a complete answer now.
Okay. Yeah, I guess what, as you, you know, as you do your calculations to see if you can accommodate AB 1416, I, you know, I'm assuming you would, you would look at all those, you know, decision points and in terms of variations.
Right. I mean, the, the department intends in printing the proponent and opponents and the local measures for November. So that the purpose is to, to print them. And so if, if it's basically, I wouldn't say impossible, but if, if it, if it's not feasible or if it's just obvious that we can't even stay within a six card limit, then that's when we would seek the opt out.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thanks. I was just going to make one quick comment and then I'll call, or actually two comments. The only question, and they're actually in response to Commissioner Giordano. The only consideration I have about exploring other counties is I just wonder if there are any other counties that have nearly the amount of local ballot measures that we have, just like, I think a seven card ballot is pretty unprecedented or a six card ballot even. But I'd be curious. I mean, I wonder, I don't know where LA stands. So I'd be, I'd be curious to know about that. And then I did want to respond to the moving to a monolingual ballot, which I would think is, I would probably not support that because I think you're basically exchanging language access for potential ballot education. And with San Francisco having the largest population of Chinese speaking, uh, folks outside of China, I think it would be a huge mistake to move outside of, to not provide language access and directly on the, on the ballot. So, um, I probably would, would not support that approach to moving to monolingual. I just wanted to add that.
Can I add to that?
Please.
So, uh, in the, I think, mid 90s, the city was under consent decree with the DOJ regarding language access for Chinese language, uh, access. And that consent decree required that the ballots be bilingual, including English and Chinese. So even though that, and then the city for decades, I think, really, we had, we had to meet with the Department of Justice before every election and go over our, our language assistance programs and outreach. And it really has only been the last 10 years that we haven't done that. And, and so even though the, the consent decree had, had, it's, its timeframe, it's, it had expired, we were still really, we were still beholden to the, the tenants of that consent decree as we met with DOJ and had to prove that we were still supporting the, the tenants of that consent decree. So. decree. So, and moving to a monolingual ballot, I think, would go against the spirit of that consent decree, so.
Thank you for adding the context. Vice President Parker.
Yeah, that's, that seems, that seems like a really important piece of context, so thank you for that. I actually, I wanted to go to the length of the voter information pamphlet for a second. What it's making me think about is wondering if you have any updates on the opt-ins to the electronic voter information pamphlets? Have we?
It's on our, I haven't looked, it's on our website.
Okay. It's, I mean, certainly, it would still have to be printed, no matter what, right? But it also is just making me think, oh, if there's some ways that we could possibly get more folks even aware that that option exists, that that would be a good thing. Of course, marketing costs money, and you know, it's all a trade-off. But that's one thing, that the length, when I see these, the page counts, if Measure H had been in place, wow, that's hefty. And I know you address all of what the increased costs would be below that, but that is a very sizable ballot. I mean, very sizable voter information pamphlet. So, anyway, just wondering if there's any other creative solutions to address that. I mean, I'm just imagining, if I received that in my mailbox, I'd probably use it as a doorstop. I mean, would I read it? I don't know. It's like, that's, that is, that's really large.
Yeah, I mean, the, thank you, Vice President Parker. The midterm voter information pamphlet was 300 pages? What was it, 280, 290?
Oh, I can't remember, we've kind of run together a bit, but our biggest book, I think, was close to 350.
Yeah. Well, I imagine it will be very enormous. I personally love them. I collect them, I love them, so, and I annotate as well, but to each their own. Some people will move to tablets to read books, and I'll always hold a physical copy. Any other comments? Yes, Vice President Parker.
Actually, this is just one more sort of technical question, and then I don't think that I have others. And that is, obviously, you know, as you noted, we didn't meet the target requested by the mayor's office, and so, what are the ramifications of that? Like, what do we expect them, they say, okay, I mean, I think it's a very compelling memo and mission that we, I mean, what's, we have to deliver on the election in the way that you've laid out, and there's a lot of cost saving that's already been done, looking at the Prop J stuff, like, there's a lot there, and so, will they say, thank you for trying, we'll look elsewhere, or what will happen?
Well, conversations continue. I think, I appreciate those comments, Vice President Parker. And I think the department has done a commendable job in finding reductions of its general fund support the next two fiscal years, especially for this upcoming fiscal year, based on the election we're all about to enter once we get through the March election. So, I think it would be, it would be very challenging for us to find greater decreases on our reliance on the general fund for this upcoming fiscal year, for sure. But, you know, we'll see, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't, we'll see what the, what happens as far as those conversations are concerned, but, but I agree, yeah, we've got, we've got a big project coming up, and that project has to be funded, and it's really mandated by law that it be funded, so, and that's, you know, and then we'll, but we'll see what the mayor's office has to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Parker. Commissioner Giordano.
Yeah, thank you, President Stone. So, just to clarify, there, so there won't be any trailing legislation affecting the department when the budget is submitted?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I had one last question, which is kind of a silly one, but on page 11 of the memo, you talk about the breakdown of non-personnel services, and it says, membership fees for attendance of workshops, and that actually seemed quite low to me, knowing, you know, what's out there in terms of access and opportunities for the department to, I don't know, exchange ideas or get best practices. Is that, I mean, would the, is the department trying to, like, keep costs low? I mean, it seems pretty marginal, or would you be wanting to have a higher amount of access to be able to attend workshops or participate in other networks and organizations?
So, that's mostly for Personnel Department to join the California Association of Elections Officials and Clerks, whatever it is. And so, that's the fees for that group. And then the professional staff development would have been the area that we would have pulled for any sort of cost beyond that. And the CACO and the Secretary of State's Office, they do provide election-related trainings and events that we can attend, and there are events that would just require traveling expenses if we wanted to attend. So, we don't need a large budget for that, and with November upcoming, we probably wouldn't be going to a lot anyway between March and November, but then afterwards, potentially, I think that's when we want to have greater funding for people to attend workshops and then network and things like that.
Okay, yeah, you know, just, it seemed very, very low for folks to be able to participate. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Great. Thank you, commissioners, for the discussion. Let's move to public comment. Okay, we do have two public commenters. Our first one is just a phone number, and, let me, can you hear me? Hello? Let's go to the next caller, Brent Turner.
Hello? If you can hear me, I can't get a response, but if you can, I'll just continue that I think it's obvious that the budget issue would be assisted, the shortness of our budget would be helped if we did not continue to resist a transition toward better technology, specifically the open-source systems that are now available and have been attempted to be gifted to the county, as well as attempted to be brought forward to the county at a much reduced price from our current systems. We have resisted, and Director Ernst has resisted this for many years, and now it is eventuating in the cost issue. We could have saved millions of dollars thus far and can save millions of dollars moving forward if we transition to the more secure, available technology, the open source, which is also about 50% of the cost of the current systems that we continue to purchase. So, this is why we've continued to ask for that transition to occur. Unfortunately, I think due to business interests that are obvious, there has been a resistance to the better open-source systems. Now, we see New Hampshire and other states moving forward with the work done in San Francisco, and this is unfortunate that the Secretary of State's Office and the Director of Elections haven't been able to figure this out. Fortunately, there is a group, Voting Works, that is available to explain the direction to not only the director but to the secretary, and I hope that that occurs so that not only we heighten our security, but we make sure we're taking advantage of those cost savings. Thank you.
Commissioners, can you hear me? My name's David Schmidt. I'm the San Francisco coordinator of the California Clean Money Campaign. We sponsored AB 1416, a very important bill to ensure that every voter knows the supporters and opponents of ballot measures when they vote, even if they can't read the whole voter guide. So, we were disappointed that the supervisors voted to opt out for the current budget year. We are relieved that they are opting in for November. We commissioned a poll that found that although 79% of California's likely voters said it's important to them to know who supports and opposes ballot measures when they vote, only 21% said they were confident that they know who these supporters and opponents are when they vote. And 22% of voters said they didn't even know they could find the supporters and opponents in the voter guide, or where to find them in it. And it's quite a long booklet. So, that's why it's so important that AB 1416 adds a short list of supporters and opponents from the ballot arguments to the ballot itself. It was carefully designed with feedback from different registrars of voters throughout the state. It only requires a maximum of 125 characters each for supporters and opponents. So, that's 250 max, it's three little lines. It was supported by also our state legislators, all three state legislators, including San Francisco City Attorney and then state assailant member David Chu, supported by a long list of good government and activist groups, including the League of Women Voters of California, Common Cause, CalPerg, Indivisible, Public Citizen, many others. It's really important, we'd like to say that San Francisco should opt in every time, every election, and it's important because voters need to know who supports and who opposes each proposition, which often hundreds of millions of dollars of city spending hinge on these propositions. So, we believe that we should opt in every election, and as far as making it work, where there's a will, there's a way. Thank you very much. This is David Schmidt for the California Clean Money Campaign.